Okay, good, alright, six o'clock, I'm gonna bring the meeting to order. Shee, so we have a lot to cover tonight, so just real quick, we're gonna be ten minute, ten minute things on discussions, since we have a lot of people here, we'll see how it goes, but that's what we're gonna try for, okay? So minutes from July 12th meeting to be approved, okay, so motion?
I'll move to approve the minutes of July 12th.
Second.
Okay, any discussion on those minutes?
Nope.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay, minutes are approved. Oh, Mike, nice is up again, let's see, municipality energy resilience program. So where is Mike? He's back there.
In the way right.
You're right on the top of the thing, Mike.
Oh, okay, real quickly, NVDA reached out a couple weeks ago. There's this municipal energy resilience program, grant program that the state has in place. It's called work. There's really three phases or steps you can do. One is get a $4,000 grant for doing energy related work in the town. The second is to do free assessments of community buildings, municipal buildings. And then the third is a grant program which is up to $500,000, no matching. The money is kind of paid upfront, so you don't need to reimburse afterwards. And it's all geared towards making sure buildings are weatherized, are utilizing alternative power where it makes sense, battery backup systems where it makes sense. Carrie and I spoke a little bit about it, there's really no strings attached to kind of go to each level, which I think the big level is the assessment level. We just need to schedule that by October 1st, they're free assessments, they would come into the community building. There's two different assessments you can do, one is pretty quick and easy. The other requires, I think, three to five years of electrical energy cost paperwork. And then they're gonna go blow out to really test the buildings. The first assessment will allow you to go for the $500,000 grant. The second assessment, the value would be not only going for the grant, but if you wanted to stack other grants. That would be energy related besides the $500,000. I think just from Carrie and I sort of kicking it around initially, we thought it would be a good card to take and see and do the assessments and really the assessments are gonna come back and they're gonna kind of prioritize different things and then you can decide if you want to go for the grant or not. So I think, I don't want to speak for Carrie, but I know I definitely thought it was like one of those things that it looked pretty straightforward in terms of time commitment. We could get the $4,000 to bring a consultant in or to pay stipends or to do whatever we want to help fund that first step, but I don't even think that's necessary at this stage. So I think, I guess what I'm kind of proposing for you to consider is we go forward with the free assessments. And then we decide if it's gonna be a community building or a community building in the fire department and the highway department or some combination thereof of those facilities. NVDA has come back, I spoke to them yesterday, they're like, you know, their recommendation is you kind of do all three just because you're gonna get information and you can make decisions off of that. The great thing about this is we can decide if we want to go to the next step or not. The fact that it's $500,000, the fact that one of the criteria, key criteria for determining which towns in Vermont get this, I guess there's about a $35 million pool going out, is a efficiency Vermont report that looks at energy burden by town and Groton is 40th in terms of, so we're considered a high energy burden town, which would help us, be an important factor for us to actually secure the $500,000, plus no match, plus kind of upfront.
So you just need from the board, the okay to pursue it?
Yep, I think it's a, yep, the okay. To go to the next step and we'll do the assessment and then we'll have a report that comes back sometime in the fall. The grant opened for the $500,000 grant in January of 2024, so we have plenty of time. And I think we, I wanted to get in front of you now so that we can get it scheduled, so we're not waiting until the end and getting behind, you know, other, you know, towns that may be running. I think there's a lot of interest in the kingdom, I think 25 towns are signed up so far in the kingdom alone.
Sounds good to me.
No, and I think it doesn't hurt for us to. To get the assessments, I would say if we're gonna, if they're gonna be here to assess proper buildings, we should have all three buildings done that are town buildings. And again, get their assessment on that. I'm assuming it's not just, it's not just heating cooling, it's lighting, it's electrical, it's, you know, not just the weatherproofing, but it's a comprehensive assessment.
Yeah, and so I guess the decision then would be, the straightforward one, the level one assessment is pretty much sign up. They're gonna kind of come in, take a quick look. Level two is gonna require more, probably Carrie's side, because there's gonna be pulling together some of the historical costs associated.
Which technically should be fairly simple, right, it's all in our system, is that correct, Carrie?
Yeah, some of it was the building, architectural, mechanical and electrical drawings, that'll be the hardest ones to dig out somewhere.
Okay.
Just give it a try, so.
You got part of them.
Yeah, it sounds like a good thing to me, Mike, and why not, so?
That's how, I agree.
This is like, we just turn another part over, we'll be able to see what it says and decide what we want to go for.
Sure. And I think, you know, based on the fact that we're, you know, out of what, 200 and something towns in the state of Vermont, we're 40th for energy use and, you know, based on our size, it's definitely something that we should be looking at and, because energy efficiency is going to reduce the costs of the town to operate the buildings, which then reduces, you know, the tax burden to do that.
It's a little, Mike and I looked at it and talked about, it's a little weird formula that they use, because you might think that means we use so much electricity and heat, but it's going by the average income in the town. So most likely ours is on the lower side and that's what's creating the higher, not necessarily that our heat and electric costs so much, that factored in with the median household income has given us this higher rating.
Yeah, I got you.
So, cause yeah, I looked up the last 12 years.
The heating and electric and it's really not that bad.
It isn't bad, it's, at average for the last 12 years, the heating was $7,000 a year and the heating for the electricity is $2,900 a year.
So $10,000 a year for heating and electric really isn't that bad.
That's just for this building.
If, if through this we're being more energy efficient, we reduce that by 30%, 30% is $3,000, that's $3,000 we're not having to raise in taxes, so again, it's.
And I'm sure energy costs are gonna continue to go down.
No.
Probably.
Probably not, no, I don't think so.
So it's good?
No. So I would say, I mean, if it's easy to pull, let's, whatever the, you said level two is the, of the two, I would, I would go that direction and move it forward for sure, that's my thoughts.
Okay.
So Carrie, why don't we reconnect and then if there's a hurdle, we'll be taking level two, if there's a hurdle or something, show Scott, which shows it up, maybe we'll fall back to level one.
Yeah, sounds good.
Good, thanks, Mike. Okay, so not weed, Alan Eastman.
Thank you Tristan.
Okay.
Before I start, let me introduce the people who are my support group.
Okay.
Because you often asked about our working team, so. Oh, Delph, Cindy Thor.
Okay.
And also this is Nick, Nick Schlesky, the applicator, you know, certified applicator.
Okay.
Also rock resident.
Okay.
My first thing I want to do is thank you actually for what we had in that last discussion. I thought it was, in fact, when I went back and thought about it, I thought it was very useful, because there was a lot of ideas going around in their heads, but they weren't down on paper. So what you have now is this eight page document of past, present and future. Like putting that to that perspective, because I thought the request for funding needed to be put into perspective of everything we've done up to now, everything we're hoping to do down the road.
Okay.
And it also raises a lot of things other than just funding. For example, we need to get much more awareness out across the town. One of the simple ones was I think there should be some report in the town, the 90th of the town report when we get there.
Which that's not a bad, that's not a bad idea, that's a good, yeah.
Which will eventually get to the other one down the bottom of my list, which is if we're gonna have new town funding, then put 90 of them in there, which is explaining sort of why you're having funding.
Okay.
The, there's another one that comes up before I actually get the funding, which was, there's a knotty patch on the rail trail.
Okay.
And I asked Greg Weston whether or not he would be interested in funding for that. And he said, he would be interested on one condition. Now, I'm not asking this, he would be asked this, apparently at the moment, the Crossmont Trail doesn't have permission to use that part of the rail trail. But maybe something you know about or not, it's from Powder Spring Roads, it's the piece east of Powder Spring Road, behind Palatipo.
Yeah, so I don't know what the, that's ridiculous, seeing this place is. Yeah.
It's had a little piece behind it.
Yeah.
Bass, oh, Bass uses it, Dan.
Yeah, the town knows it.
Yeah, I don't know why.
The town owns the land.
Not sure, yeah, not sure what.
So Greg is gonna come and ask you for permission to use that piece of land at some point, anytime, that's something to think about.
I don't even know that we can, can we, you?
It's an east.
That's a.
There is an east and not that?
Yeah, Bass uses it.
Bass uses it.
Yeah, that's true.
And you've already set precedent to go across town property by what you did on Powder Spring.
Okay.
So it's pretty hard not to allow that.
Okay, fine, very good.
So Greg will be happy if you want to prove it like that.
Well, I don't know that we're quite there yet.
Okay, but that was something he was figuring out, we had a discussion this week and I thought it was crazy.
So it's more about funding, I think, than more than it's about permission, you know, as far as town not weed, as far as I'm concerned, if you want to do experiments and work on town property and try to eliminate it, that's a wonderful thing, now getting funding to do that from the town is gonna be, I think, kind of the tricky part for that. So if that's where we're gonna run into, you know, we're already up and over, we had a flood, we have damage from that, we have our budgets and everything we have, our, all our tax rates going up, so everybody's taxes are going up, so that's just, just something to think about.
So, there's, as we discussed, there's the proposal for doing spraying, for needing to do spraying part of the town land.
Okay.
And so that's why I went in, looked at all the other possible funding sources. And one that's come to mind, which I think seems fairly easy, is a watershed grant from Fish and Wildlife.
Okay.
And looking around here, it was the municipality, the town can apply for it.
Well, okay.
Which is like Mike, one needs to know who can apply for it.
Yeah, when you say the town, you mean somebody on a committee or within the town can, Mike does great jobs and stuff, but people within the town that work here, we don't really do grants and stuff.
No, 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 like Mike, Mike writes the grants and then you sign off on them, that's the way.
Yes, we're very happy about grants like that. And it really, it takes a special person to write a grant and be able to, to do that and it's very helpful and it's wonderful and it's whatever, I just know that none of the selectmen, myself, I can't write a grant, so, and.
Time, right.
Yeah.
I've done it all my life, they're far more detailed than these ones.
Yeah, so.
The watershed grant though, if we applied for this one, it would be on town land.
Okay.
I'm looking at the town park for this, but the town park is currently a disaster.
Okay.
And if one were to target that to be cleared up on the ground, then you would probably have to do it on neighboring properties as well. Because otherwise, then we come back from those neighboring properties. And we've spoken to both the neighbors, Ed Galloway and Richard Wakefield.
Okay.
And they're both perfectly willing to let something come in and do it. And that's just sort of, you know, I've been going around town.
Which, which is exactly how the not weed thing goes, as far as I can see, everybody's willing to let you do something, but nobody is gonna be willing to pay money in big dollars to have it removed.
I'm not sure it's big dollars.
Well, okay.
On individual properties, and I'm only by the cost Nick's been telling us, on individual properties where it might be a quarter of an acre or less, it wouldn't be that expensive, but I'm not sure.
When you say not that expensive, what are we talking about?
We were talking about $1,650 for an acre on Clarks Landing.
Okay.
That's the proposal you had last night, which I'm still hoping to be approved today.
So I mean, I think, you know, what I'll say, just, you know, looking at what you've, what you've written here for the watershed grant, I think that we, I don't know how Tristan or Aaron feel, I think it makes sense to try to move forward with that grant proposal to get funding. You know, as Tristan said, we've, you know, as much as we recognize that this is an important issue, we've got a lot of funding things that we have to kind of navigate, which makes it challenging to, you know, just be able to say, hey, here's, here's $1,600 tonight to do that, you know, we have to figure out where that's coming from in the budget and, you know, the, again, the, like, as Tristan said, the budgetary and, you know, taxing implications of that. But it sounds like, you know, this grant may be, you know, a possible source for that funding that you're looking for. Now, I don't know what their, their process timeline or otherwise is, but, you know, again, it may be something that is, is the direction to go from a funding source.
And when Mike comes to us with a grant, he just says you need to sign here, here and here, and you'll get $500,000 to put towards this, this and this.
The problem is. The watershed is a maximum of $10,000.
Yep.
Things that make it more likely to fund it, I want shared responsibility.
Okay.
So if Chuck Gallagher, if I get Chuck Gallagher to put money, one of the problems with towns here, isn't there a lot of money in the residents?
Well, thank you.
I'm a American, so we've got, we've got this problem where they don't want to pay more taxes and they also.
Don't want to pay.
Pay more on their own property. Except they, what we're trying to tell them is, Rick Wakefield, I shouldn't, I didn't have to mention it, the set, his set system is completely underneath it. We're not gonna have an leakage onto the, onto the river if this keeps up in a number of places. And then I guess the owner is gonna be responsible for a huge amount of money he doesn't have. So there are those kinds of issues that are gonna come up.
There's also the issue that the select board is charged as a fiduciary responsibility to all the taxpayers in the town, not just several. So what Tristan was saying is that there isn't extra money this year especially, because of all the increases we've had, just get it with the reappraisal, there's a lot of things going on. There's not money there to keep flowing out. And all these field projects are great, but we need to take and get back to the basics.
So Alan, so, so that being all said, obviously, so can we make a plan to move forward for a plan for next year? Meaning, can we put together, we get some grant money, we start to try to think about a budget for not weed, talk to people about that, put a plan together? I don't think that anything's gonna happen this year, to be quite honest with you, as far as I can see. But we can make a plan for next year.
I'm hoping we can have a plan to put something into the budget for next year.
Okay.
I'm hoping we can enhance awareness, get more people involved in it. Going around and meeting with people has been the best, best.
Right, no, absolutely.
The watershed grant is like an early February deadline, I've already talked them about.
Okay.
I've got contacts in with other people, but I'm waiting for phone calls to come back.
Okay.
I have to come back and, I admit one frustration, which is we have put a huge amount of work in this year and this year, we're asking for $550 to spray all the water down on Clarks Landing.
Okay.
There's money for years two and three in this quarter.
Okay.
But that could be budgeting the town budget for next year.
Right.
But what we're really looking for at the moment is the need to do, to clear what we've already done.
Okay.
Down on the land.
And when you came to us and you said, hey, I am needing a project, so I'm gonna work on this, and we said, that sounds like a great idea, but we didn't say it would be easy and that people would be writing checks out and saying, okay, well, just go take care of it all, so.
I had no idea we would get to this point this year.
Okay.
We've done so much this year, we should hope we start the same.
So what are you asking for right now, for money?
$550.
So $550?
So we have town property maintenance with property upkeep, that's $550 to build it, yeah, it doesn't hurt.
So can we do that?
I, yeah, I mean, I think that's, that's doable, okay? Yeah, but I think if we've got the, if we've got it available in the budget.
On property maintenance.
Down on property maintenance, page five.
And we'll talk more about next year and trying to do something in the budget to pursue this and see where we can come to get, get a program going for that. So I'm, I'm for the $550, right? $550 for this year?
Yeah, so I'll make a motion to approve the expenditure of $550 coming from the Town Property Maintenance Property Upkeep Fund for the not weed, on Clarks Landing.
Okay, I second that.
Just checking to make sure it wasn't $556.3 or something. It was $550 only, so.
So any more, any more discussion on that?
No, I mean, I think, as we alluded to, I think the long-term solution is a budget line item, so we don't have to keep going in the town property maintenance.
And I think too, like that.
Or maybe make the prop, town property maintenance budget bigger so that it can.
Include that in that.
Include that as an item that.
Correct, and that, that's where it would fall in the budget anyway in the future. The other thing too is, is, you know, if we look at that and we, and we look at what that cost is gonna be, you know, again, if, if we know what, you know, and we bring that to the budget for next year and you're able to find grant funding sources that apply to that, that's even better.
That's the key.
Right.
Does that have to be on, does that count, has to be on town property?
Well, I mean, yes, that's, it's, it's for town property maintenance specifically.
Because one of the things that comes up with a lot of grants is cost sharing. So if we get 75% from a grant, I'm not sure necessarily where the other 25% comes from.
That's where we, I mean, if we have it specifically for not weed, that.
On private land?
No.
No, it's, it's, it's town, those are properties, private.
Right.
The reason we're going for the town park is at the moment is because town property and the neighboring neighbors next to it.
And to be quite honest with you, I feel like for town property, that's what our, that's what we're concerned about right now. When it comes to personal property, that's a whole other discussion and I don't know where to go with that.
Yeah, that's a way bigger.
If you're applying for a grant for the park, right, so, you know, what is your percentile estimation of the properties? It's probably 80% town property, right? I mean, just as a ballpark number, you look at those other two properties, maybe, you know, we're paying the cost sharing for our properties, but if it includes other, you know, adjacent properties, that it's part of that grant proposal separately, I don't know if that works or not or computes properly, but, you know, just trying to think outside of the box on how, you know, with, especially with properties, you know, that are part of the same thing that are adjacent to the town properties, that may work out.
It might cut into their share of speed even less that they would have to come up with and then maybe the landlord is willing to pay, I don't know.
Wish I knew the, how much money we could weigh.
Just.
You know all the.
Count on zero.
Yeah, count, count on zero, that's a good way to put it.
And we're, I'm not trying to shoot you down by any means, Alan, it's just, you know, it's, it's not that easy. It's, you know, we answer to the people in this town, so we have to justify.
If you do that, if you get done with that, I have a terrible patch of stinging nettles.
See, I know.
And I need it taken care of, and you can't burn it.
Don't they?
I can't.
So, so that's the, is what it all comes down to it. And so I'm, I'm glad that you're working on this, that's what it takes? And if we can get some grant money and some other money that can help work on this and you get a kind of committee that, this is a, it's a good thing.
And I'd say too, I mean, you know, you're talking to the right people, but it might not hurt to ask questions of like, you know, the Vermont, you know, the Vermont Conservation folks and say, you know, what resources are there for private citizens? Right, because I'm sure that this is the same problem that many towns have that have not weed issues or other invasive species issues. And they may have additional private, you know, that, if you know that there's not weed on somebody's private property, you can go, you know, we, here's a potential solution for how we can do this, and this is how you can pay for it.
Or we made those contacts.
Right.
They have a contact with that.
Right, so, you know, again, it's, that's where, for us, I think the point is, we get into a position where if we start taking care of some people's issues on, you know, invasive species, then, you know, to Dan's point, then we have, we have an obligation and we've set precedents that we have to do in other places. And that can snowball very quickly out of control into, you know, a budgeting nightmare. So we have to be, we have to be somewhat conscious of that.
Right.
Okay, so is it pushed and approved?
We didn't vote, did we?
Oh, we didn't finish our thing, so, all in favor for the $550 for not weed, say aye. Aye. Okay, so you got $550.
One final comment, thank you for putting up the no dumping signs.
And I was gonna tell you that we put up the no dumping signs and we are trying to track down and figure out to let them know that that was not a dumping spot. I doubt anybody's gonna pick that up and remove it, so we're gonna move on from that, is kind of where it's at. So, at this point. So, I mean, it's pretty hard to, you know, it's pretty hard to punish somebody that really didn't say that there was no dumping or we're just not supposed to put any stuff down there and so it's kind of, kind of one of those things.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, we good?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. All right, so, Department, Highway.
No update.
No, no update, no update, I was just trying to think, are we adding anything under Highway? Is there any discussion?
Well, the FEMA stuff.
Okay, do you want to cover that while we're here?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So instead of Cion gone, probably will end up costing, actually just costing the town $5,000, give or take, with material. Doing the FEMA, getting FEMA money, you can put in their labor and their use of equipment and it bumps it up, he thought, closer to $10,000. So FEMA will pay 75% of that, the state will kick in another 7.5% after that. The decision needs to be made, is it worth all the headache of going?
Right. The reimbursement is $75, here, they talked to me about it or whatever, to go through all the procedure for our little bit of damage we had on Cion Road and some other small things. And I kind of felt like there's towns that are in dire need of huge, major hundreds of thousands of dollars, so I didn't know that we needed to go.
So we had, today was gonna be scheduled to call and talk to the FEMA person. They had to reschedule because I was gonna ask him his thoughts on our kind of small amount, was it the headache of the whole FEMA procedure, but that didn't happen. I did, two FEMA gentlemen stopped in last Thursday, they just were going each town. I did talk with them for a little bit, they didn't really, they just wanted to make sure they knew, that everyone knew they were around and stuff like that, and I told them about the one road, that's where that was left. I've been doing some of the FEMA online Zooms that they've been doing throughout the state, just listening to what's, you know, worse, what happened to us as we know, so mine are compared to other towns, but it was just good to listen to see what, what they were doing, which is quite a bit. They had, today they updated that they've paid out $8.5 million already of the approved $9.5 million that has already been put through FEMA. There's 466 FEMA representatives in the state right now. There's four hundred and sixty-six FEMA representatives in the state right now. Thirteen thousand homes were visited, seventy-five out of the eighty-four towns that claimed some damage have been visited. So they're definitely here and doing, I don't know if it's as much as they can, but they're doing a lot. Which is good, especially for the towns that need, need all the help. So that's kind of where it is, I was hoping to talk to him today to see the thoughts. And then you guys, I guess in the end would make the decision to continue through the FEMA procedures.
He said, what Harold told me the other day was that he had room in the budget for.
We didn't go over time for anything, he didn't, there wasn't anything.
Right, they would have been paid like a normal week anyway.
And he, he had the material, money in the budget for the material, as it was. So he had room in the budget to work with that, and it didn't shortchange anything anywhere, so. And he gets, it's kind of a, you know, I wouldn't say it's a free handout, but it's, it's, you know, money from the government for fixing. Things that happened in the, in the town that, you know, we are paying for. So I guess the question is, is, is it, is it worth it to do that or not?
Right.
It's no paperwork on my end. It's like, Harold's gonna be the one that does it, you know? So I mean, if, I think if it's, if he's comfortable with it, where his budget is, and he wants to take the hit, then I'm fine with that. If he wants to put in the.
He wasn't, he, when he talked to me, he was kind of like, it's a lot of work to go through.
Yeah.
All the process for the amount of money versus if we had gotten hit hard.
Yeah, or if it, you know, if it was ten times as much, you know, then it would be definitely worth it.
Need the money way worse than we need the money, so it wasn't like.
Yeah.
Right.
It's kind of how it was, so.
So, I mean, I, I'm okay with, I mean, again, it, it, ultimately, I think it's Harold's decision, I mean.
No, it's your decision.
Well, it's our decision, but I think it, you know, again, to Aaron's point, we're not the ones that have to go through that. And if, you know, if there's room in, in Harold's budget under highway.
Which is what he.
Which is what he's said.
Yeah.
Then, you know, we're not spending any.
Pursue it.
And we don't need to pursue it, yes.
Okay, so, uh.
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
So, then I understand Harold's position, I know, and I respect that.
You've been there.
I've been there. Um, the only thing that I can say to throw out is, this is just a little bitty deal. And we have a lot of new people that have never been through it.
So maybe we should do that.
Almost like a drill, you know, the town's not gonna realize a lot of, of. It's not gonna affect the town, but the process, um, it would, it's gonna be a pain.
It's a good exercise.
Exercise, if you get a, a million and a half.
That's a good point.
Is, it kind of gives the new people an opportunity to, okay, this is how a system works and how it goes.
That's if we do it for this little amount, we don't ever want to have to do it again. So, no, that's a good point, actually, it's probably, it would be good to follow through with it, just to, so everybody understands how it all works. And what kind of a hassle it is, I guess, I would say, if it makes, yeah, that's a good point.
I mean, you can cut, run anytime. You know, I mean, if it's, you can cut and run.
Right.
This is just more than what it's worth, they're gonna pay.
Right. So we, we should just follow through with the paperwork and. Finish up whatever the process is and see how it goes and go from there, I, I guess. That's, what do you guys think?
Yeah, it sounds like a good idea, yeah.
Okay?
Yeah.
That's fine with me, it makes sense.
All right, good, that was, uh, so, the only other thing was, I sent, uh, I responded to Harold's, uh, not much. Going on email for the month and just to see about getting, working on the parking lot out here in the sand. With our new.
Yeah.
Yep.
Director.
Did he say anything to you about the cold, box culvert?
Nope. Yeah.
So you'd, I don't know if.
And he sent me an email, but I didn't, he didn't.
So he, he mentioned to me when I, I, I was stopped by the other morning to, to sign grant paperwork. Um, that the state district seven is, I think it's district seven, has requested.
Possibly.
Possibly, they haven't confirmed yet, if, I guess if they're gonna take it or not. But they, they've requested to take the box culvert that we ordered for on another project. Um, and, and I don't know where that status is, but.
Meaning from the floods, they need that.
Somebody like needs it, we're, we're improving what we have, but somebody's completely lost there.
So, and it would just mean that that box culvert project, if, if that, if we do.
We already paid for that, didn't we?
They'll, they'll buy, they're, well, they're gonna spy us a replacement. It'll just, we'll have to wait to lead time for it to come in.
Gotcha.
So it, it's not any change in cost, it just means that that project gets pushed out to next year.
Okay.
So, uh, you know, just a kind of a.
Sounds, yeah.
We'll keep an eye on it.
And I don't know if that's set in stone or not, but I think it's probably gonna, yeah.
What needed to happen, that's what needs to happen.
We're just improving ours, and there's people that completely lost there, so.
Right, right.
That creek didn't, or that, yeah, that stream didn't flood, so.
No, okay, good, so, treasurer, repro contract, financial questionnaire, set tax rate.
Okay, um, so it's time to look at the repro contract, that's the company that has done our town report. And, um, we usually do a two-year contract, 'cause it saves a little bit on the cost. So she has sent it to me, um, and to do the two years. It is sixteen ninety-nine, one thousand six hundred and ninety-nine dollars each year. And it was, um, thirteen eighty-five. So, um. It's not big money that it goes out to bid or anything like that, it's just, I do like working with them. We have a good system of how we print it, and, um, she helps us with the cover and, and, um, we.
So it's going on, it's going on three hundred bucks or something?
Yeah.
Okay.
So that, so we just, you know, we're discussing that budget, but I just, um, wanted to let you know. And if you want to sign the contract, or I, I think I've signed it in the past, but it's, um, up.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, we've been happy with what they've done.
Yeah, yeah, good, good quality work, yep.
Okay. Um, and then we have a financial questionnaire that we do every year, um. One section that you have to have select board members attended financial training. So I don't know if any of you have, and then somebody needs to sign next to my name after reviewing the questions.
I have not.
We've done this every year.
I have not.
Okay. Somebody is still gonna sign at the bottom there?
Yeah. You get to sign.
Um, and the audit is, is finalized and there's copies in the office for you to review. I've gone, we've gone over it, um, the findings and all that. Um, I did want to let you know that we did get a, um, fire department donation check from somebody local. So it's, it's in there, so, um, if you want, give it to the fire department, am I gonna put it in the fire department box, or, okay? Um, close out fast account, I think there is a letter.
Talked to Brenda about that, didn't you?
Yeah, Brenda.
I think she'd sent an email to you.
There's a, there's a fast account that we have, a community bank, that has six hundred and thirteen dollars and eighty-nine cents in. It hasn't been used very little since I've been here. And it's really just paying the reconcile, and they're not using it, so she, um, sent an email saying why don't I close it? And, and if it's okay, so.
I don't remember seeing the email, so I must not.
And they use the money for their banquet, so the money is used up and then just closes.
That's fine.
But the select board needs to.
Yeah, because we're closing an account that was established, so.
So we need to vote to close it, or?
Yeah, yeah.
Close it, or, yeah.
All right.
I think so, it's a, it's a pretty official thing, so.
Yeah. I guess I'll, you wanna do it?
No, you make the motion.
Okay. Well, I'll move to, uh, close out the Fast Squad Bank account at, where's that?
Community Bank.
Community Bank.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay. Do we need to sign this piece, or do we sign?
No, no.
That was just FYI.
FYI.
I might have another warning when I write that final check, 'cause they need to pay for their dinner that they had. So I'll have a check that I have to print and then a warning that you guys have to sign. So that will happen next time. Um.
So, yeah.
Um, budgets I've handed out were at fifty-eight percent.
Yep.
I have not really reviewed them, um, so if you want to review them, we can discuss like the next meeting.
Or any point between now and then.
Yes, right, anytime, yes, right. And I plan to print and mail out the tax bills September first. And I have the, I think all of you saw the tax insert, I always like your select board's blessing, it's in the folder.
Yeah.
Um, I think I got a few of yours, so I, I've already printed it, so I hope it's okay. So.
I had five hundred of them, so.
Yeah, yeah. And then I, I think Carrie's gonna talk about the tax rate.
This is, there's, there's a typo here.
So I handed out the tax rate sheet.
Yeah.
You know, you can, it's basically the budget minus revenues, which anticipated revenues, um.
Which were up, um, so much.
It's the same thing in the town report, if you look in the revenue page of the town report, it's basically the same.
Okay.
The amount that needs to be raised, eight hundred and eighty-nine thousand, and blah, blah, blah. So the second page has the rates. Education rate, as we talked about one other meeting, jumped pretty good, certainly for the homestead. Non-resident didn't go up quite as much, but, so that'll, that'll be tough. I've got it figured out to about two dollars and six cents per thousand of what your house is assessed at. What your property is assessed at, so if your house is assessed at two hundred thousand, that's two hundred times two dollars and six cents, four hundred dollars. Your taxes are going up.
Okay, so, it's two dollars and six cents, but this says two nineteen, so what's, how do you?
That's two point. So that's, the two nineteen, that's the rate, but the increase is what I'm saying, increase.
Percentage?
Increase is, is, the amount that it's going up is point two zero five eight. And if you turn that into dollar, that's two dollars, point zero five eight, I rounded it to six cents, two dollars and six cents.
Okay.
Per, per thousand dollar.
Per thousand assessed.
Okay.
Right.
A hundred thousand dollar property is going up two hundred and six dollars. All rough estimates, let's just say.
Cause we won't know until we get it finalized.
We have to get this grand list finalized, which that's Dorothy's department, that's happening in the next couple of weeks, so it will get tweaked a little bit. The revenues will stay the same, it'll just be the grand list figure, which is one million, three hundred and eight thousand, one hundred and twenty-five. So when grievances happen, that changes that figure, sometimes it's not even enough to change the raise.
Okay.
So, I think because we don't have a meeting until after we're doing the taxes, that you guys are just gonna have to approve it tonight. And then we'll get those changes and then we'll leave it for you.
Sign off on the final.
Yeah, and we'll leave it for you in the box on the exact final figure.
Okay. So you need a motion to approve the increase, or something, increase to seven.
Just approve the tax rate.
To approve the tax rate.
Good, did anyone have any thoughts on any questions? Zach, you're looking at it pretty good, so.
Yeah, I'm trying to, yeah.
We're using some of the fund balance for the general fund and for the highway, so that's figured in here.
And that's, that's what we've already approved, right?
Right, right.
Yes.
That's not, yeah.
So if you see the amount, the town needs seven hundred and fourteen thousand, seven hundred and sixteen. Then you subtract our anticipated revenues, which is the pilot money, and then all the, the little amounts, the clerk revenues. And the fast revenue, different things like that, that reduces it. So then the seven hundred and fourteen gets reduced down to needing to raise in taxes, four hundred and seventy-nine thousand, six seventy-six, you see at the bottom of the first page. And the same thing for the highway, their budget four eighty-eight, one thirty-seven, they're gonna get state highway aid. And using fourteen thousand of their fund balance, so what they need to raise in taxes, four hundred and ten thousand. Combine that with the local agreement, which is the veterans exemptions, which did jump up a little, 'cause there was a couple more, uh, veterans this year, I believe. It's very minimal what it amounts to, but, so that all gets figured in, and then gets figured into the, it's really just your liability on the second page. Four seventy-nine, six seventy-six divided by the grand list, that's the tax rate.
Right.
And then the highway one, same thing, and then you add the education rates, which they just get told to us, nothing that we can do. And it's all added together, and that gets you to the two point one nine oh two and the two point two zero two two.
I mean, lo- looking at this year over year, I mean.
So last year we used more fund balance, remember, so we knew it was gonna be a bigger jump this year.
Jump this year.
Yeah, right, and, I mean, just looking back to twenty-one, I mean, town tax rate really from. You know, other than we used additional fund balance last year that brought it down. You know, twenty twenty-one, the, um, tax rate was, uh, point three five zero three for general fund. And, uh, you know, uh, point two two eight one for highway. This year, I mean, it, there's an in, an increase there, but it's, you know.
Right, 'cause that was the year we used all the highway, remember, a hundred thousand or something.
Which, which lowered theirs by nine percent.
So if you take their, highways last year tax rate to this year, it's about the same. And if you take the towns from two years ago to this year, it's, it's up a penny, it's up a penny.
Yeah, it's pretty close, so actually all of all is kind of balancing out.
It's, yeah, I think that, yeah, again, the significant thing that's different last year, this year is the, is the educa- homestead education.
Right.
Went up.
Okay. So we need a motion. Zach.
You're the motion man.
I'm the motion man?
You're the motion man.
All right, um, I will move to approve the, uh. Town and highway tax rates as written here for twenty twenty-three.
With possible adjustment to the grand list.
With, with the possibility of an adjustment to the grand list.
Second.
All in favor?
Was that a good motion?
Say aye.
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 Okay, good.
But then you do need to sign the bottom thing, that's the late homestead, that needs to get signed every year. So just take one of your copies and I'll review, sign it.
Who didn't scrabble on this?
I didn't, mine's blank.
I scribbled in mine.
Did you? We'll sign Zach's then.
Who, who seconded the motion?
I did.
Aaron did, Aaron did. He seconded that emotion, I mean.
Okay, good, so, no, I haven't, oh. Okay, so, anything else under treasurer that covers everything?
So.
Okay, what about for clerk, we have more for clerk?
Yes, you have more, sorry.
So, kind of back to the flood stuff, just a couple things I want to throw out there was, Greenup is, is doing. You know, trying to help out towns, I just wanted to throw this out there, I'm pretty sure we're gonna say no to it, but they, they will do bags and pickup in towns. But it needs to be, uh, debris from the flood, flood litter. So I just need to respond to them, that we probably don't need it.
Yeah, I don't believe that's.
Well, I have a bunch of rocks out there, you know? If somebody could.
Tristan's throwing a party.
Make a rock.
Fill bags with rocks.
Rock lawn.
No, I, I, I think we're all.
I don't think.
I think we're good, yeah.
So the other thing is, they're doing a property buyout. So there's grant funding available that would buy a hundred percent of somebody's property that is flooding, keeps flooding. Or, um, I know.
Where do I sign up?
So they'll, they'll buy it out, it has to be torn down, but you know, soon they'll do that. And then the site remains a green space forever.
Well, that's good, do I get full asking price?
Appraised value.
Ooh.
Okay, never mind.
So that's just a few things I wanted to put out there.
We don't really, I don't think we have anybody, do we have anybody that, uh, other than up the road by the town garage, right?
Yeah.
Uh, what are there?
But again, if it, if it's somebody that falls within the flood plain and meets all the specifications, that, doesn't matter if they flooded this time or not, right?
Not even in the flood.
As long as they're in the flood plain.
Yeah, so they can fill out an intake form and then, and a materials, you know, something will be sent to them to finish an application.
Huh, that's interesting, okay. Huh, that's interesting, okay.
Um, and, uh, I think Dorothy's gonna talk about the reappraisal, but I sent that to you, it got sent to me, sent it to Dorothy and all.
Right, I got it, yep, yep.
Um, so I'll just let Dorothy talk about that. And we had the, well, I guess dogs we'll touch on, there's about eighteen, did hear from, somebody registered their dog today, and someone else told me about there are four dogs that are going to get rabies, and then they'll be in the register, so. I don't know, you know, we're trying to s- be a little tougher and everything, so really, there's like eighteen dogs, I don't know what you want to do for your next step. We're legally, I think, allowed to just go pick them up?
Well, I think that we need to follow through with our system in order to.
I mean, they've had multiple letters.
Right, multiple letters, so the next step will be going to pick up the dogs.
Yeah, I would say.
It's the only way we're gonna.
That's what the last letter said.
The only way we're gonna continue to, to follow this policy.
Right.
So we're gonna have to order, yeah, Mark, I guess he's gonna have to go pick up dogs.
Mark's gotta follow the process.
So what do we need to do?
Just start at the top of the list and start with that first house.
Yep, absolutely, do we need to have a letter, do we send a form, do we?
I can do a new warrant with the leftover dogs.
Okay, and then I'd say we need to start picking up dogs.
Yeah, are you gonna send something out, I, I mean, I, that's my thing.
They've been warned.
They've been warned multiple times, but.
I mean, I guess, we can send another letter saying, constable.
We need to have the warrant when you go and pick the dogs.
Well, that's what I was wondering, so we take the warrant, whether, but Mark takes the warrant with him and picks up the dog. And that's it, so, yes?
And normally the dog will go to the pound, they'll have a chance to, they'll have ten days.
To retrieve it, pay all the penalties?
Do all of that.
Right, and if they don't, then that's the end of that.
Yeah, that's it.
Do they have to re- I don't know how it's set up, do they have to register before they go pick up the dog, like they have to show proof of registration?
I think so.
Yes, and they'll be shown.
They'll have to do the regular thing that they should have done all year with me, then show that to the pound, pay her fees, then get the dog.
Right. Right.
So, so now, yes, let's move to the next step.
Right. With eighteen dogs, I mean, we, we probably want to make sure that.
Well, it's not gonna be total eighteen, you've got four and whatever, so it'll be down to whatever fifty.
Yeah, it might be down, and I think he's, I mean, he's gonna only be able to bring one over.
There are some more that aren't, that aren't on the list.
Yeah, there's certainly dogs not on the list, but, I mean.
But I think from, from here on out, if, if we find any dogs that are not on the list or that we are unaware of, that, you know, I, again, it needs to follow the process, but if they've already been warned, and then we need to impound them.
Right. Exactly, definitely.
Okay.
Sorry, but we, we're not, we're not going through this another year.
Well, it's, I mean, it's, if you have a, there's reasons why these things need to be followed.
System.
Finish, we need to follow through with our system.
Have you seen any takers on, I know I've seen, uh, BLTC dog law.
Dan is doing.
Dan's doing it.
I'm doing it Wednesday.
I did it last year.
Nobody else from town is, Mark hasn't expressed an interest or anything.
Mark is so busy with work, I don't think there's time to get away from stuff with dad.
Busy time of year, yeah.
Yeah, so.
Okay, so, um, the local hazard mitigation plan that we worked on forever.
Yes.
Has been approved by the state July eighteenth.
They put a check in the mail.
No checks happened. So if, if we were one week earlier and this flood was a very big flood.
I knew this was coming.
Because that, now that jumped us from the seven point five percent that the state pays, now we will, would get twelve point five, because it didn't happen till July.
So it's good that we, we got it corrected, we got it, we got it.
It's good moving forward, it's done, so that is all set.
Implement it, okay, good.
You have a form to sign for the alternate, for the N A K broadband?
Yep. I do, do we need to, we need to, do we need to do anything with that, meaning, other than me just signing it?
You just sign it.
Sign it.
Okay, I'll just sign it.
And then the, I don't know if we want to touch on the trash, or we want to wait till health or Dan's?
Well, we kind of.
Dan, constable.
Dan, I kind of talked to Dan about that, but Dan.
He'll be taken care of tomorrow.
We'll touch on that during constable, that's all I have.
Who runs the meeting here? We did, we did have it.
It has to be said, said in public.
Oh my word, well, thank you.
You're welcome.
Um, assistant select board member and town clerk and assistant treasurer and, I don't know. Assistant assessor, Dorothy.
Okay, so a couple meetings ago, the, um, it came up about Dave Sandhill's property, and was there town property on the edge of his for mowing, and there is.
Right.
So here's.
Because I got a visit from him.
Okay, so here's his land.
Did we ask you to visit?
And there's a being that belongs to the town and ground.
Which, that was a negotiation with one of the previous boards, I think, somehow.
Okay, piece of the data, or pay it or whatever you want to do.
I think that, I think that's the piece of land that Alan is, that crossed the line.
Yeah, the piece of peace.
Okay.
Yeah, that's Sandhill's.
That was part of the board, the previous board.
Because I remember I was, I think I was actually on the board at that time, but I don't remember all the details.
I just need, I just need the property card back, if you're gonna keep the map behind it.
The town gave you X amount of property, so you will be eligible for permits, which is seven tenths of a million.
Right, 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 that was, we'll get it.
You can keep the front card.
I mean, you can have the front page, I just need the property card back, please. Um, so there, um, we're working on grievances, we had seven grievances, and they will go, um, results of grievances will go in the mail either this weekend or like Monday, where, um, John and I are working on them. And then once that happens, then I can, um, print the final grand list. So that should be, like, next week I should be able to do the final grand list. Um, we got our letter from the state, um, it said we need to do, um, a reappraisal, so I have, um, Carrie gave, I gave you all copies of that, so there's a, there's a form there that we have to send back within thirty days. It says we have no receipt of it, we are in receipt of the order and intention to develop a detailed compliance plan. So, and then we have to have our compliance plan done on December twentieth, so.
So that all being said, can we just say that we're scheduling for twenty twenty-six to have that all?
No, no, we're gonna do, um, we need to do a statist- we're gonna, we're working on, um, doing a statistical reappraisal, which is like, um, just a percentage of the town, but it'll be kind of an overview of the whole town. So I've talked with Barbara Slutger, um, she's working on, she got us formed so that we can be the appraisers. I'm filling out a form that says I'm a, I'm a trainee, and John would be the appraiser. So between now and, and December, by December twentieth, we'll fill out our plan that says we're gonna do a statistical, which is only gonna be about forty properties. So this fall, we need to do part of that, is that we, we would do a data quality study, which would be five percent of the town. And that's also about forty properties, we kind of look at forty properties, which would include sales that we had in the last year, and that kind of gives us our, our beginning step, and then that's part of what we're gonna turn in for a plan. And then the plan will say that we're gonna do a statistical, probably next year, which will keep us within the six years of when we had our last reappraisal. So if you've done that within six years, you don't have to do a complete reappraisal.
Because we don't have the money, because it's too quick that we hadn't set aside to do that?
Right, but actually, we do have the money, but anyway. We're hoping, and there's, there's, the, the, the form that we have to fill out to do this plan, um, is pretty extensive, but we can get that done by December. So that's our plan at this point.
Okay.
And it's not, um.
So Dorothy, this is saying that we have to have that reappraisal, we have to submit the reappraisal plan within one hundred and fifty days of this form?
December twentieth.
But it doesn't really lay out a timeline as to when the reappraisal needs to be done.
Um, the statistical one would be done like next year.
Right, right, no, I'm just saying like the.
It does on the other pages that we've got.
Okay, yeah, the order here just said, just says, you're, you're, you're by order to complete.
Said as soon as possible.
Yeah, but if you can't get it done till twenty twenty-six, everybody's busy.
Well, yeah, it just says right here, now, there, fore, fore when you're ready. You're by order to reappraise your case, and they get a grand list, I don't tell you anything else.
It's unlike the state.
Okay, so that's not gonna work, but you have a plan.
We have a plan, and we're hoping that they're just gonna approve, this John and I will be able to do it. John, um, John will be the appraiser, and I'm the assistant or trainee or whatever. So that would, that's gonna cut down on our costs a lot.
Okay.
And it'll just be, it'll be a smaller, um, picture of the town, but then we'll apply it to the whole town.
Okay.
We'll change all the figures, all the, the standards, the land grades and everything, and it'll be the whole town when we're all done.
Okay. Do you need me to sign, who, who's?
I need to assign this one here that says we received this within, and I have to get back to them within thirty days.
Yeah, sign it and do it.
Patrick says we received this, let this notification, and we're working on our plans.
Okay. Easy enough, sort of. What else?
That's it, I just think, put it on.
Okay, thank you, Dorothy.
Put it on.
Fire and fast. Got the rest of that? Yes, which I gotta. Hold on. I had an email, did you guys see the email? From, yeah, uh, yes, I had an email. Okay. Um, I don't.
Deleted it, it looked like spam.
So, says, um, select board monthly update, we have a new member on board for the fire department. R one is back and repairs in service, trash pump is repaired and back in service, turnout gear has arrived for three of the firefighters. Hose and ladder testing has been done, we will need to replace some large, as well as some small hoses. Thanks, chief, so, that's what I have for an update. Which is good.
I left off on what's in.
Okay.
Need sixteen thousand, eight hundred and forty-seven dollars, sixteen thousand bucks.
Uh, oh, that's, so there's another department over.
And we can run.
What's that for?
Oh, now you don't want to go into detail.
It falls under, it falls under the.
You said you were running short of time.
It falls under the fire department?
Yeah.
Okay, Groton Fire. Okay, has the work been done yet?
Nope.
Good. It's for, um, I'm assuming you're gonna.
Roof repairs.
Okay, roof repairs.
Yeah.
What was the amount, sixteen?
Sixteen thousand, eight hundred and forty-seven dollars and sixty-seven cents. So that doesn't have to go out to bid or anything like that, first, stuff, okay?
If you've got the time.
We are, we have ten minutes. You know how this works.
Since May, we've been working on this, we've been working on this since May.
Okay.
And I've talked with Richard Bildis, Bo Wilson, Harold Hatch, Nate Puffer, Dana Smith, Brian Ron, uh, Colleen Roofin.
Okay.
And Steve Battle.
Okay.
And he's the only one that's come back with a proposal.
Okay.
And so, after looking at the, the roof, and this is Project Creek.
Okay.
Okay, and the roof, it's on the furnace room leaks.
Okay.
And it's above, the, the other main roof is above, and the ice and snow come down and held it. And so, we need to get that leaked fixed.
Not only does it leak, but the plywood is, like, smashed right through from the ice hitting roof.
Yeah.
And so when we had, when different contractors looked at it, they took it and said, you screwed the fallen out of your roof, you're gonna lose your main roof, okay? And, uh, so, and then, as we, as I worked with contractors, and they said, it doesn't make any sense to fix that roof, because the ice and snow are gonna do the same thing again. And so what they're suggesting is coming from that main roof, and coming, continue that pitch.
Okay.
Down from. See, it's setting that way back, so bring it down, and we'll use this on the roof.
Okay.
And that, so the snow comes instead of.
Okay, okay, alright.
Yeah.
So, so, so that, so that repair will, will.
Fix it for how, like, so then the roof will be good for like another?
Yeah.
A long time.
Ten years?
And see, the screws, the screws are coming out, and so you're gonna use the oversized screws.
They're like number nine right now, they'll be a number twelve size screw.
Okay.
Yeah, he seemed to explain more about that.
And I have no problem with all of this, per se, as a board member, I just, I just need to make sure that we follow our procedures and when we use a contractor and bids and all, whatever we're supposed to do, is all that I, per se. So as long as we're following our guidelines of.
And you have the reserves.
That, and we have the money to fix the roof, then, I guess we need to fix the roof.
You know, I contacted all of these, and, and so, you know, trying to be a bit local, and, um, so.
Okay. Everybody's busy. Yeah, okay.
Yeah, nobody else came back, but it's, it is what it is.
Nobody's got the time, you know, work on that old roof, so they just, you know, and so, um, you know, the roof is, is in need of repair, and you get a good windstorm and we're maybe in trouble again, so.
Okay.
Brett Light, Brett actually took me over there. There's no other way to actually do this because of the setbacks, of the edge of the problem.
Oh, yeah, okay.
So Brett Light and Kevin were looking at it, and it can go on that neutral footprint, you don't need a permit, can you switch one control, you got it?
Go ahead. So.
Is that for a motion?
Yeah, I was waiting for you, Zach.
I need all the, I gotta get all this information, really. I'm gonna make a motion to repair the Groton Fire Station roof for sixteen thousand, eight hundred and forty-seven dollars and sixty-seven cents, uh, to be paid from the Emergency Services Building Improvement Fund Reserve, that has forty-nine thousand, one oh two in it, according to the sheet here.
Second.
Hey, we already had discussion on us, so all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay, there you go. Okay, we're done with the fire department.
Are we?
So, you have a contract, you have to stop in, you have to sign the draft, you have insurance, all that.
Okay, good, uh, so, constable, trash.
I got a couple things on that.
Well, I haven't even, hold on, the constable trash, kind of jumping the gun here, Dan.
We played vicious dogs on a neighbor's property on Park Street, and we took care of that. The dog is now being registered, that wasn't the vicious dog, had a neighbor, had a friend bring the dog in, which was Park Pitman, but over a few years, that house, so. She got it back to you, the rabies shot it?
No, I think it was another week before she.
Yeah, I know she's been appointment.
She paid, and it's all sitting there.
We went out on your hitching, um, took care of that. If you ever join Bubba Road, be taken care of tomorrow.
Great, did you also take care of the Ohio person that got bit by the dog, Boltonville, was the person that?
I've been thinking about it, if anybody's dog bit somebody on the, um, what'd they say, it was on the trail in Boltonville.
Rail trail, or what, right?
Yeah, the, you know, when you go walking, could, bunch of town now, and I'll call the guy back in Ohio, let them know if they have the rabies shot.
Okay. Alright.
Yeah.
Good, thank you. Quick, we got health officer too.
Yeah, we had a complaint on the.
Oh, we did like.
I gotta, hold on, I was, yeah, I guess I would. I got library, split.
Oh, go ahead.
We'll take care of tomorrow, don't dump trash on town property.
Don't dump trash on town property.
Anybody's property.
Yeah, so you're gonna get a bill from the town and please dispose of your waste appropriately, prosecuted and.
So you and Dan are going?
Oh, yeah, I'm gonna take care of.
You are, okay, I just want for the minutes, I get to take care of, thank you.
That's it.
Okay, library. Okay, library.
Um, music in the park is Friday is all I know.
Okay.
What's the weather look like, will it be in the park?
It's raining. It rains every weekend.
It's in the jazzy, but it's not really the library.
Yeah. And not really either, but it's gonna be a big one.
Okay.
Who truck is coming?
Oh, okay, good.
Stuff, so it's gonna be.
Excellent.
The rain is gonna. Yeah.
The, the rain comes every weekend, so just get used to it.
Might as well.
It's only nice on Sundays. So, zoning administrator, back to you, Dan. Nothing? Wow, that's good, okay. Health officer, back to you, Dan.
Yeah, we had a complaint on the Aubrey House, uh, rats, coons, animals coming out of that. Going down, the house has been roared into, um, and. We've had a lot of people call and complain and want me to condemn houses.
Okay.
As of July first, twenty twenty-two, I can't condemn any house.
Okay.
The only way a house can be condemned is through my governor's order.
Really? Okay.
That's the change that.
So you just call the governor and say, hey?
Well, you go through the fire.
A huge hundred million, they use it or.
It's not gonna happen.
Okay.
I'm tired of it, I'm all done with this one.
Where is this house you got now?
Running down the other, Makers Church on the left.
Out there. Yep.
What we refer to as the Chester Maze place.
I don't know what we, uh, we're still waiting for stuff on that.
Anybody want to get court?
It's in probate?
It's in probate, the abandonment issue has been resolved.
Okay.
It's just they're waiting on.
What, the vehicles, you mean?
Vehicles and the, um, tires and everything else.
So that still can't get moved until probate?
Well, until probate is done.
Nobody's living in there now.
No.
No, they haven't been.
Inside is unbelievable. I can't believe anybody lived in there before. Certain things. But I didn't see the racks right there.
Okay.
Alright, that's it.
Thank you. Maintenance. Anything on maintenance? I know the one thing on maintenance is the guards for the lights in the gym, and the select board's gonna fix them.
Alright, alright.
Okay, we don't have any, just make sure we're covered under insurance or something, if we fall off the ladder. But we won't.
Everybody sign this liability form before we start working there.
Yeah, okay, we're just responsible for everything else.
Steve's gonna go down and work on the lilac trees, he never, he never cut them down, like chop them down, so he said he's gonna work on that.
Okay.
Um, the coffee field, the little shed.
Yep.
Supposed to be stained this year to wet, to keep the wood from rotting, so he'll work on that this fall probably.
Where is lilacs?
Down the park, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
They're really overgrown and taken over.
Right next to the knotweed.
Yeah, they're fighting with the knotweed down there.
I'm not gonna.
It's ram.
Threat. Okay. IT. Have we done anything with the computers yet?
No, we just bought them and they're here.
Okay.
It's all, I know.
Okay, alright, planning commission. Anything, Mike?
Uh, not on the.
Oh, I thought you were part of the planning, who is on the planning?
Dan and Brad, yeah.
The other Mike?
We're now waiting for the new revised, uh, front plan now.
Okay.
Which went from a hundred year front plan now to a thousand year front.
You mean ten year?
No, I didn't mean a thousand year, that's what I was saying.
Everybody's in a blood zone, man. Good lord, hey, can I, can I someone, someone?
You guys took a vote in the new office, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, they had a vote, I wasn't the last week, but they had a vote and pulled into the new office for the year.
Okay.
You're staying the same position, is it? Is that Catherine that was here at the select board meeting, get to that planning commission meeting, or? Okay.
Okay. Alright, um. NEK, CUD.
Uh, no update.
Okay.
Try them again.
Vork.
What's that?
Vork.
Uh, no update, outside of the, the agreement's all done, but I think we have.
Yep, okay. USDA, community center grant?
Uh, wait.
Okay.
Maybe by the end of the month.
Yeah, cause we should be, you should be hearing something, right?
Well, they said two months, so after June twentieth, but who knows?
Okay. I knew I'd get you here for a few more things. Uh, drainage project, where are we at on that?
The only thing I know, I talked to Nate, and he was reaching out to the archaeologists.
Yep.
That were here for their two days, and they were here for two days, that's all I know.
Did we know, did the Newtown attorney start working on Eastman's?
We switched that again.
We have some, yeah. Do you wanna? Okay, we're just.
Just, I think we found one that fits better.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'll come in and talk to you.
A different, we had better recommendations.
Yep.
So.
Yep.
We went with a different, very different option. Uh. Policies, are we getting into, what are we doing with policies?
Okay, well, I've, um, we're working with VLCT, we, I think we got it really finalized now, so, um, when. I mean, I, I have it all ready, so I can go over them when you guys want to. I haven't gone over again with the highway, cause there was a few things.
So we're not quite.
No.
We're not quite, we're not quite there yet, so we need, there's some more. Okay. Some more discussion on the policies and.
Yeah, so it's like, we don't have a meeting for another five weeks, so, you know, if you could come in and, and review them. I have stickies on all the pages that have been tweaked here and there. Some are mostly, um, just laws have changed and rules have changed.
Right.
So, instead of it being a one sentence thing we had in twenty twenty, we have a page. So there's, you know, different things that have tweaked by the VLCT attorneys.
But there's been some discussion from the highway department on the policies and stuff, and wanna just go over it some more, so.
I mean, it's, it's good to get everybody involved, you know, it's, it can be a pain in the butt.
Yeah, it's been a lot of work, there's been a lot of tweaks here and there and getting things just right, so. I think we, I had a Zoom call with the, um, HR from VLCT, so we went pretty good today.
The board appreciates the extra effort you're putting in, I would say.
For sure, yeah.
Yes, definitely. And it's, it's, you know, those are tricky, a lot of them are tricky policies when they involve employees, so it's making sure that they're right and.
I'm not a policy writer, I'm just a tool. When chief says this is the reason, I'm trying to understand it and put it in so we can understand it, so.
Absolutely.
Okay. Alright, open to public and other business.
Um, so I had this out of just foliage planting, cause we did send letters out and stuff. Um, I'm probably gonna try to schedule a meeting for, and get an email out to everybody, um, for the week after next, cause I'm not here next week. Um, just to get together and pull together the, you know, starting with the basic checklist. Of what we know happens, and then, you know, what are folks wanting to do add or otherwise, and then, you know, at that meeting, if there's others that are not available that, you know. We think should be available, that we reach out to, and so we can start pulling together something that's a little bit more organized. So, I think that's my, my goal is to help try to make it more organized and stuff, so.
Okay, good, thank you. Anything else for open to public and other business?
One thing I did forget, I'm sorry, um, I did get the insurance all, all set for the roadside mowing.
Oh, cool, great.
So they have it, and Harold signed, and everything's ready to go, so I meant to tell you.
Which are gonna be starting that in another week, next week? So I think that's a, that's a good thing.
Yeah, and, uh, on the community garden front, the produce stand is kind of open, we'll see a sign out, Brian, and produce is kind of shuffling in there.
Okay.
Before it pays.
Okay. Great.
Looks really green.
Looks good.
And that's the ultimate living spot for that right there?
Uh, I think so, um.
Well, we, originally, I was thinking it was gonna, I thought originally we talked about it was gonna be right here or something more visible.
Yeah, it's, I mean, it's pretty big.
Okay, so it's too big, okay.
I mean, I don't know, talking with folks, I think that seems to be a good spot now.
Okay.
I, in, from talking with Wade, he didn't think that they shoveled back, or they plowed back there, so. Um, we may need to relocate it for the winter, I don't know, so. I mean, I think we're open for other ideas, it's just, it was pretty, it's pretty large.
Okay, yeah, that's fine, if it's working.
I think, uh, another consideration too is like, uh, you're keeping the produce, you know, I mean, if you're, if it's sitting in that afternoon sun for six hours isn't the best spot.
Well, it's kind of, it's, it's, um, it's blocked from the sun right now.
Yeah, where it is, yeah.
In fact, when I was coming in, there was a car going back to check on it.
Yeah.
Right at that point, I mean, it, right now, we're a lot of greens, so, um, some of the other stuff will kick in later, and then, uh. Other folks will be, uh, like in previous years, we expect them to be dropping off some extra produce as well.
And that should be noted, that's free produce.
Okay.
If there are any limit, we have a lot of, you can, we can bring down.
I don't know that that would be, would be more size, how big is?
Yeah, there's like, uh, it's the end for fishing limits. Yeah, you're only allowed to drop two.
Cause I can remember when we used to. Uh, okay, cool, great, excellent, um. So.
I have to be, uh, the fishing disposal tube that we discussed.
For the, this going in this, this week or next week? Okay.
We're just finalizing placement and, um, I think, well, we, we kinda have the placement, but it's, it's just getting it installed, so that's gonna be happening, so.
Alright, cool, and that's for the lead sinkers.
Lead sinkers, any, lead sinkers line, anything that people want to dispose of? Hopefully not.
Hopefully not. Okay, alright, lead sinkers. Okay, Kerry.
Okay, so I thought I would do an upst, update about delinquent tax, I haven't done one for a while.
Yep.
We're down to thirty-six thousand seven hundred and ninety dollars. It is sixteen properties. One is in bankruptcy, and they send a payment mostly monthly, but, um, five people are making payments. So that leaves about ten properties that I've not heard anything from.
Okay.
So.
So then they'll get put on the bad list.
They're on the bad list, naughty ones.
Then we'll buy them.
And then.
Then we just take them, we send them, like Mark to go get them?
Yeah, pick them up.
Like the dog?
So the, the state did open back up this program that paid people's, it pays your past due mortgage payment, utilities, or delinquent tax. And it did pay some people's.
Do you have any forms for that?
It didn't pay for probably seven or eight people's in town, and, um, then the program, you know, they were running it till it ran out of money. Now it's on a waiting list you can sign up for, and now they've also just, this is so weird, but they just opened it back up. Not to the people on the waiting list, to the people who have already received money, can go back.
Can get warm up. Wow, okay.
Interesting.
So that's interesting, but, so I thought I would update, I don't, I think that's, we're pretty good, that many properties and only thirty-six thousand.
Right.
That's pretty good.
Nine thousand, I think is Zach's property.
No, no.
Well, the, the, yeah, the bankruptcy one is.
Okay, good, good, good.
That's my update, that's it.
That's good information to have, um, okay. Uh, follow-ups on speed signs and stuff like that, I did talk to the sheriff's department. I think it was last week, was it last week I talked to them? I talked to them last week because we haven't really seen much of a presence from the sheriff's department in town.
He was here Sa- Saturday.
Well.
In the last few weeks, we talked.
Yeah, the last few weeks they haven't been here, they were supposed to bring the sign down, they never brought the sign down, so.
Took a lot of the.
Yeah, so I had a conversation and they said they've been busy and they're shorthanded and blah, 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 and this and that, so I said, no problem, but just was checking in with them to.
Yep.
See, um, and that sign does work, cause people do really slow down when they see the sign, so.
Did you see they have stuff across from you?
Yeah.
I see they must be counting cars.
Is that a study or something?
Well, it must be a state's.
I wonder if it's a stu- state thing, but it's not.
Yeah, I did see that.
That's not us?
No, I don't think so, I don't think Brad's even.
No, so.
It could be the state highway, and maybe the NDA.
Yeah. Okay, don't push it. Okay, so. No, not enough foot traffic.
Necessitate crosswalk.
I guess.
Stay on track, assistant, select board member.
Sorry.
Okay.
How early we are, how we can do that though.
Let's, let's, see who is in charge here. Okay, so Jim Light covers, we're gonna fix those.
We're gonna look at that tonight?
We already said that. I think that's it.
The ladders out.
Okay, so a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Alright.
Aye. Okay, sign orders.
I think I signed.
Oh, the agenda's the same as the.